That's how our roll call.
Ron Miller.
Here.
Ness.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Schneider.
Yep.
Mieski.
Here. That brings us to our public forum, and first up tonight is our Good Neighbor Award presentation to our Scandia Home Delivered Meal Program. I honor to do that. So those of you who are here for this presentation, would you come and join me? Do you know who you are? Would you like to see? Know them.
All these familiar faces.
What went so high?
I know.
We go on both sides. Well, and you all are going to be the recipients for the first time ever of our Good Neighbor Award because there were enough of you that we wanted to recognize individually without being too many of you. So you're each getting a button. These are the first ever Good Neighbor 2018 button. Yes. 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 Yes.[221.22][221.22][S01. Thank you all very, very much. It should be, maybe, should go into the Scandia Cafe. Yes. Yes. And you each have your buttons, and I think we have a few for those who couldn't be here tonight. I'll give it to Sally. Okay. And Sally would like to speak. I'll give, yeah. Do you want to give it a little bit in my ways, or should I? No. You can do it. You wanted to take it. I'll take it. You have to take it. Okay. Very good. And then Sally, you wanted to, do you want to pick? We want to. So can you all? Over me. I'll take it. We'll take two eyes. We'll pick your type.
Pretty close in height. That's the problem.
Sally. 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 Talk about paparazzi. Yeah, right. I think we need to say cameraman one, two, three, click. Thank you all very much. And Sally wanted to talk to you outside. Be a tutorial. Sally. Sally. Did you get any pictures? Is that a map? Well, I'll take. All right. Yeah, next on our public forum, is there someone here from the St. Croix River Association? Anybody here from the St. Croix River Association? No. Okay. Next. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about an issue that is not on our agenda this evening? Okay, then we will close the public forum, and that brings us to approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the consent agenda next.
So move over to the consent agenda.
Yeah, I heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to our public hearing. And this would be considered to consider the adoption of the street reconstruction and vituinous overlay plan for Scandia and the preliminary authorization of the issuance and sale of general obligation street reconstruction bonds.
And I think Ryan Goodman from Bolton and Mint can address the plan.
Okay.
And then Jessica Green from Northland Securities can give an update on financing.
Great.
This is for the public hearing portion.
Yes. Now, the way that we will address the public hearing, sorry, is Ryan and Jessica will then speak, give a presentation, and then I will open it up for any public comments. And if you have something you wish to say, I'll ask you to come up to the podium, tell us your name and address, and say what you'd like, and then when everyone has had an opportunity to do that, then we will close the public portion of the hearing and move on with the agenda. Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, on page four of your PDF for this agenda item, is the five-year street reconstruction plan. Really started back in 2008 when the city completed a pavement management plan, and within that consists of road ratings that were updated in 2016 in conjunction with the 15 and 16 project. So it has a breakout in percentages of what your roads are rated at on the section that was completed in '16, and then it goes into what the five-year street reconstruction plan was reviewed extensively with the Capital Improvement Committee over the '17 budget for '18 adoption. So it identifies projects that we're bringing forward tonight of the 2018 project, and then no major street projects in '19, but then doing some additional street projects in 2021, '22. Then talks about the bonds that would be issuing for the project to finance it, and then also within that is the road rating map that's included, and then cost estimates of each of those projects as discussed previously in the project development. So with that, I guess, pretty straightforward document. This is a summary of what we've been talking about the last few years for requirements of this procedure.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Jessica? Yeah.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I'm Jessica Green with Northland Securities. This is probably your first time seeing me, but typically you would have worked with Monty Eastfold, who retired last year, but you don't issue a lot of debt, so this is probably new, or we'll just have a quick refresher on how that works.
Thank you.
So as you know, we're holding a public hearing tonight for the adoption of the potential street reconstruction plan for the city of Scandia. You do have a rather large project before you that looks to be in the range of about $6.4 million or so. $6.4 million or so. With that, we've worked with staff, we've talked about some of the funds that may be put into the project, and roughly that's around $2 million. So we're looking at a rough size of around $4.4 million. We have written the plan for up to $4.5 million, just to give you a little bit of room so that you can cover the cost of issuance, et cetera. But typically how this works is, of course, you hold the public hearing, you allow for public comment, and part of that public hearing process and the resolution that goes with it is the calling for the sale of bonds. This is very preliminary at this point, so as of tonight, you're not approving the sale of bonds, you're just calling for the sale of bonds and just allowing the public to know that you're preparing for that so that they have the opportunity to comment. With three construction bonds, these are a little bit different than what the city has issued in the past. You've issued improvement bonds, that was back in 2007, so again, it's been a little while. With improvement bonds, you are assessing a portion of the project to adjacent property owners. In this case, you're not doing that. The support for the bond payment is going to come from levy dollars, and because of that, it allows, statute allows for a 30-day reverse referendum period. So after the close of the public hearing tonight, there is a 30-day period whereby the city may receive a petition, and if you have a petition that has at least 5% of the voters from the last general election, that was in 2016, essentially the voters can say, "We don't want you to issue these bonds." So I believe this would end March 20th, so 30 days from now, and if that, once that period expires, and if there is no petition, we'll move forward with the preparation for the sale of bonds. We would be working with staff to prepare for a rating. The city has not been rated before, but based on the market valuation, the positive trends that we're seeing here in Scandia, we do think that the city would do rather well. And because of the size of the bonds, we think that a rating would be beneficial to you. It just essentially allows you access to lower interest rates, which is good for the overall levy, being that that's going to support the payment of the bonds. There is a preliminary debt schedule for you, that's under 9B in your packet. I can certainly go over that quickly if you'd like to, but again, this is very preliminary. You're not approving the sale of bonds, going through the public hearing process, and also adopting the plan does not compel you to issue any debt. Again, it's just to allow the public to know that you're preparing for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Anybody have questions? Anyone want Jessica's 9B schedule? You've had a chance to look at it. You okay?
No, I agree so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, so at this point, we are opening.
I'll add one other thing is, you know, when, you know, we're calling for the issuance of this kind of debt, the question is, you know, how are we going to pay for this? And it's one of the things that we looked at in the capital improvement program that I think is really critical, and it somewhat shows it up in here on the two schedules that I put up there, and, you know, these were late additions to the packet. But one of the things, if you look at in 2015, and '16, and even '18, I look at a total amount of, you know, tax, what we've levied for taxes for both public works and road improvements. The change, if you look at public works from '17 to '18, is that number was reduced because we have moved some of that money, the maintenance money, from seal coating into, we're going to use it, you know, pretty much for, to pay for the roads. So what ends up happening then is our public works budget has gone down, but those funds are then being directed, you know, first of all, to either the local road improvement fund or to fund debt, the payments on debt. One of the things that was in the capital improvement plan was to increase the, you know, the base levy for roads by 5% a year, which you did for '18, but you're not bound to do that for future years. I think the other thing to look at here is when we were looking at this, it would have been, you know, as part of, you know, nine, 10 months ago, as part of the capital improvement process, you know, we prepared these assumptions based upon an interest rate of 4%, and if you look at what, you know, Jessica, you know, now the update is probably an average true interest cost of, you know, in the low to mid threes. So, you know, we're still well within these protections.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. All right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this issue?
I was here.
I'm going to go, I'm going to back out to you.
Thank you.
This is our public hearing for this. Anyone have a question or wish to make a comment? Okay, then seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll be discussing this later. Is that correct? Okay. So we're going to move, we're not going to move forward, we're going to move backward now because Natalie Warren from St. Croix River Association is here. So hi, Natalie. Welcome.
Hi. Sorry, I'm late. It's at the Lakeland City Council meeting, and it was talking a lot about lost dogs before I could talk. So, yeah, I think I have enough, actually. If you could handle that, that'd be great. Okay, awesome. Thank you. So my name's Natalie Warren. I work with the St. Croix River Association to bring greater awareness to the protections on the Lower St. Croix Riverway, which are through the form of local ordinances, building restrictions for residents within the riverway boundary, which hopefully you all are familiar with. I've been here a few times. Last time I presented the Land Owners Guide to the Lower St. Croix Riverway, which illustrated each of those building restrictions. Very easy to understand for landowners to kind of flip through and get an idea of what the restrictions are on their property. And about a year and a half ago, we met with city administrators from different communities along the lower riverway, from Taylor's Falls down to the confluence with the Mississippi, and made a list of things that they thought would be most helpful to work with landowners when they're thinking about changing their property in the riverway boundary. And one of them was the Land Owners Guide. Another big one is what you have now in front of you, which is best practices for zoning applications within the riverway. Can also be a general best practices for zoning applications, but this one, this document is specific for people who are living in the riverway boundary. So what it has is outlines of every process from beginning to end, when you're thinking about changing your property, to documenting it with the city. It outlines pre-application meetings, and again, it's all voluntary, but best practices, really trying to focus in on the preventative things so that people understand what they're getting into, and they don't waste time or money because they have all this information upfront, and they know that it's best to communicate with not only the city, but also potentially the National Park Service, the DNR, the watershed district. Then there's a worksheet for each process. So at their pre-application meeting, they can fill out information, maybe that they didn't know about their property, to then go and work with their builder or architect, and then it goes through the general application process, some more worksheets, and then it goes through the building process if that's approved. This is not just to kind of streamline things for people, it really is to increase communication and hopefully decrease variances through compromising and not getting too far along in the process before you realize that you've already wasted money, and you either plow through or go back and change your plans. So if you know anyone who is considering changing their property, this would be a great resource for them to just take a look at and understand what they might be getting into, and understand that it does oftentimes cost a lot of money and take a lot of time. Those two things are important to know right up front, and this is available on our website along with the Land Owners Guide. And we will be creating a three-minute animated video that is just a nicer, happier way of talking about these things as an introductory thing that people can look at. And we're also spreading these out to all the realty offices.
Good.
All right. Any questions on that?
No. Don't make that.
Okay, great. And I would just like to say thank you so much, especially Neil, for your involvement in this project early on. I do, real quick, Tony's here, there are two events coming up with the St. Croix River Association. He'll be quick, I promise.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Tony Forwell, St. Croix River Association. We have a few events coming up that highlight recreational opportunities in the Lower St. Croix Riverway for Lower St. Croix River communities, and one is April, May 5th in Afton, and May 14th in Bayport, and they help, and there's going to be some guided kayak, paddles, bike rides, and then we'll be presenting our resources and information to the public and those landowners who come and show up and talk about these and promote the riverway and everything about it.
Will we get information writing about these or online about these?
Yep, so we'll have these events listed online, and we can also send you the information about these events as well.
Okay. I'll be happy to promote them if we have something to.
Yep, for sure. I can share that with you really easily.
Digitally.
Yep. Awesome. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question, I guess, for Neil, is how well does this dovetail with our processes?
I think it probably dovetails well. I think one of the things is, as Natalie said, you know, they're trying to put something out general for all the communities, but there's also a caveat in everything they put out that every community is different.
Well, I understand.
So, yeah. But generally, it's like, you know, a 90% document that's good, but it leaves them through the process and tells them, "You do still need to ask your community."
Okay. Good.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that brings us to our committee reports, Parks and Recreation. Welcome, Dustin.
Hello, Council. I'm here tonight in place of Terry. He's out of town. I'm here to talk about the 2018 Winterfest, which went over great. I was out of town. But this year, we, the Gamble Garden came into it, as well as Elum with the Chili Cook-Off, and those events went great. We're talking about starting a Winterfest committee that could spend more time and maybe include some of the local businesses, and they could meet more frequently than the park committee does, and so that's what we'd like to start. There were some issues, Adam said, with the GFI's popping, so he said next year they'd like to have a generator down there on hand just in case. Otherwise, so far, they've brought in 544, but I think we're still waiting from the Scanley Cup donations. And the Coob tournament, we'll be looking at doing that again next year. There was another event this year, so that's why we didn't do the Coob.
Right. It would be nice to have that back because that was fun.
Oh, yeah. So they are excited to be back again next year, so they're looking to come back, and it sounds like it will work out next year.
Good.
Other than that, I think that's all about the Winterfest. We're also looking to do a joint powers agreement with the school as far as doing a school forest at Lily Skogan, and they also would like to use the land that we have to the west of the school along, was it Ogden right there? Was that road on that?
Odell.
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 They would do a prairie setup over there, and then use Lily Skogan or the forest side of it, and they would set up for some outdoor classroom activities, and by doing this would also allow us to, they would provide a DNR forester that would help with the activities as well as help with planning, and help us get grants to help fund other stuff at Lily Skogan, and could help us with getting that park going.
So this, well, the, and the school is involved with this, and I saw you had a committee of the staff from the school and the principal.
Yeah, Ms. Griman, they're all on board and excited to do it.
Yeah. Good.
We just would need the joint powers agreement to bring them in on it.
Start it, yeah.
I think one of, you know, one of the interesting things here is, you know, Terry and I had some discussions about, you know, who are the users to Lily Skogan, and the feeling is that, I mean, with, you know, the schools there, it really did present itself an opportunity. And, you know, Principal Julie and some of her staff are very excited, and when you think about the kind of programming that others, you know, that they have available in schools for us, you know, some of this, the, there are enough, you know, the DNR has developed programming, other schools have developed programming for you, and it's not just all environmental programming. It's art programming, it's music programming, it's mathematic and sci, you know, and mathematics programming. All this is developed. So what it does is it just offers a range of already developed curriculum for the, for the schools to use, and, you know, they are excited about that. In terms of the joint powers agreement, that, you know, it's, you know, if I look, you know, I was looking for an example, and, you know, the state provided one between the city of St. Paul and one of the school districts, and, you know, I was expecting a 30-page document, and this is it. You know, it's, so we're not talking about, you know, a huge legal document, it's basically, you know, schools maintain the, you know, the programming, you know, they don't want to interfere with any recreational activities. If they're going to do anything in the park, they let us know in advance if they're going to, you know, tapping for maple syrup or something like that. You know, they reserve the right to apply for grants, you know, for programming or forest enhancement, whole of city harmless, and in the same thing, you know, we allow them to use it as an outdoor, outdoor classroom, and we'll promptly review requests for, you know, use of the property. And those are basically, you know, the guts of what's in the agreement that we're, you know, two of them. But I think it is an opportunity to, you know, when you look at if we can get, you know, who uses Lily Skogan, if you can get the kids excited about it, they're going to bring their parents there, and we could have, you know, it'd be a real opportunity, I think, in my mind, a good opportunity, which is why Terry and I pursued it with the school staff.
I think it's the absolute best thing to do with that piece of property.
Schools right there, it's close.
Absolutely.
And it was, I was reading through the way the program works, and it's a committee that the importance of establishing a committee, and there's a committee beyond just the school, so it would be involving.
Yep.
Friends, one of the things that was suggested here was friends of Scandia Parks and Trails would be a part of the committee, that the Lions Club, potentially Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and so the, it would be, the committee for overseeing it would be beyond the school, and so it would become really a community.
Yeah, it looked like it'd bring a bunch of the different.
Yeah. Looks really good.
Committees and groups that we have together are already working on it.
Should I do them for us tonight? Yes, it is, and, you know, what this would do is kind of set the table to let the schools know at least that, yes, we're willing to enter into a joint powers agreement for the use of those areas. Okay, to support working with the school district on the designation and drafting of a joint powers agreement for use of the parklands.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
And is there any questions on the annual report?[1619.83] For last year, we brought in just over $1,400 for Winterfest. We offered 12 summer recreation classes with 48 participants. And then we offered the Learn to Skate for Beginner and Advanced for Winter Programs and the Pleasure Skating. And then also offered, or added Pickleball for Taco Days.
The plans for this year, the calendar, to start that preliminary Winterfest planning?
Yeah. Yeah, we're trying to get it started earlier this year, so we can include more activities, hopefully bring in some more money. We're trying, trying to do a raffle this year, but we have to get somebody with a gambling license that could come in with it on us, or come in with us on it.
Who's supplying the snowmobile for that?
Players.
Oh, really?
Danley knows the lady that handles their giveaways, and she said that we're exactly what they want, and if we can, can do it, they'll provide the snowmobile. So that's why we're trying to get started earlier this year.
One suggestion on the, under Section 5, meetings, public meetings, it talks about, "The notice of the meeting shall be given by posting committee agendas at the community center." And can we just add that on the website, at least for the two hours? I mean, I think probably you made, you do it already, but it's, put it in here, so it's part of.
Yeah, so it's in there?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's under 5D.
5D, okay.
Those are actually their bylaws that you have to approve.
So they'll have to.
So I, you know, it's a minor amendment, so it's something maybe we can bring back next time, just to prove that change.
Okay, because we have to approve these tonight, because it was the idea?
No, no, this is just their report, that's just included as part of the annual report. But if we want to change the bylaws, we can do that another time.
Perfect, any other questions? Well, thank you.
All right, and that brings us to our planning commission report. Sherry?
We have one item from the planning commission tonight, which is a request from Shannon Muldahill, who's here tonight, for a variance, so that she can construct a single-car garage on a property at 19235 Larkspur Avenue. It's a little hard to see here, but on the east side of the property, you start to see the contour lines and how close they are. That whole eastern half is bluffs. So between the buildings that exist on the property and the bluffs, it's impossible to put a garage here without a variance of some kind. And so we had a lot of questions about this in the beginning, whether it was better to try to pull it a little forward to the street. I think the planning commission's conclusion, after talking with the applicant about it, is that the best location is on some existing impervious surface. Even though it's only a few feet from the bluff line, it will be less disturbance to put it on that existing flat location than to bring it closer to the street and have to do more grading and disturbance. And so part of their discussion was about that location, and then about adding, and this was Ryan's suggestion, adding gutters and leaders to the roof to take the drainage that is now going over the bluff toward the street instead. And then the applicant is also willing to remove some impervious surface between the proposed garage and the house, to try to take additional drainage away from the bluffs. So in the end, the recommendation of the planning commission is that this meets the criteria for a variance. It's definitely a physical issue that's unique to the property, the location of the bluffs and the septic system and existing buildings. It is not an economic issue only, it's definitely related to that unique characteristic on the site. And the minimum disturbance and, and variance is to let her be a few feet from the bluffs, about four feet from that south property line, and about 30 feet from the street. And that'll be the least disturbance, and will actually improve the situation in terms of the drainage to the bluffs. And so they held a public hearing on it at their last meeting, there were no public comments on this one. The watershed district was asked about it, they had no comments. They won't need a watershed permit to do this. The DNR also had no comments, since this is in shoreline, we asked them for an opinion on it, and they were fine with it. So the planning commission is recommending to you approval of the variance for the garage in that location, with the conditions that you see on the last page of the report that require the leaders and gutters, and also require her to combine those two parcels that are the property.
Thank you, Sherry. Anyone have any questions for Sherry, or any comments to make?
You know, I think one of the other things that, you know, when we, the first recommendation was to move the garage closer to the street. But when you look at the physical constraints, if you can probably see up there, that if you move, you know, the cones here where the front of the garage would be, if you move those forward, you're losing two mature trees. And we also had setback issues from the well, which is located like right around where my cursor was, which really drove us back, back to this location.
I'll piggyback on that, because I went on the site visit. There is a crown in the driveway, and right now, everything's running toward the bluff. So with the garage being where, you know, to be, instead of having everything running backwards, it's going to be, you know, with the gutters and that, it'll actually be running toward the street. It'll actually be better than what it is right now, so.
I guess that was the question I was having, stormwater, is that going to create more of a problem?
No, no, it's going to be better, because the water's running back toward the bluff right now, so it's definitely better.
I think you did a good job of explaining all that in.
It's actually quite a bit different than the first recommendation of staff, but it's definitely the most common sense one, so.
Well, we, we thought about the, you know, the gutters and leaders, that was in the staff recommendation. But I think being, you know, being out there with the owner to see what would, what kind of disturbance would be needed in order to pull it closer to the street. The neighbors next door had a variance just a few years ago, and the recommendation was to move theirs to the street, to get it away from the bluff. So it was partly based on understanding that situation, too, that, you know, it was our first thought, well, could we get it further from the bluff? Usually we try to stay out of the bluff impact zone, because there not supposed to be any disturbance in there. So the desire was to get it away as far as possible. But given the, the disturbance it would cause by doing that, I think this is a better solution.
Thank you, anything else? Is there a motion then?
I move to a resolution number 02-20-18-01. Conditions?
Okay, second?
Second.
Oh, yes.
Am I able to say, talk?
Well, this is, yes, yes, you can come forward, I don't know, this is not really a public hearing, but.
Okay, then I don't need to, I, I, I'm the homeowner.
Yeah.
So I, I was just going to ask a couple of questions, but that's fine.
Well, you can, you can ask, come on up. Sorry, since I thought this was going to be such an easy one, and then we were giving you everything you wanted, I didn't realize you wanted to speak, so.
When, thank you, everyone, you did a great job, I appreciate it. I, since the planning commission, Neil was out, or I think you were out also, but I did some more measurements, and I don't know what the final end was, but I thought it was that, I heard you say now, tonight, a few feet, so.
It's like two feet, I think it's two feet from the bluff, four feet from the southern property line, and at least 30 feet from the street.
Okay, all right, well, that, that's perfect.
And you have that in the report that's in here?
Oh, okay, okay, then I completely misunderstood, all right, thank you, that's, that'll work.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, did we?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that moves us up then to our staff reports, building official first?
There's really little comparison, you know, between this year and last year, you know, 18 permits for slightly under half a million dollars for the line.
Okay, thank you. How do we tell how many, can, do we tell how many of those are new builds, and how many of them are work that he's doing for other reasons?
I.
From the permits?
I'm trying to think, I think, believe there's probably only one new build in January.
One new construction in January.
Okay, and there's, but there's no way for us to know that by looking at these numbers, right?
No, there isn't. As we keep going, I will, I'll update you, but since it's just January to January, didn't spend much time on it.
Okay, thank you. Then our police report, Brandon is not here.
Brandon may be later, they have Derek meeting with parents today.
Okay.
So he, I saw him earlier and said he may be back here later.
And everyone has read through the reports, so I think so, we're all right. And then our fire, Mike?
Evening.
Good evening.
So you have our report, but as you know, this weekend is our fireman's ball, so that'll be happening Saturday night. And we also had a training house burn last Saturday. Went pretty well. Steve was out there, got to see what we do. So a little cold, had some issues with stuff reason, but we did get some good training out of it, and then let the house burn down, so. But otherwise, if anyone has any questions?
Questions? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you Saturday.
Thank you.
And our engineer's report, Ryan?
Mayor City Council, you have my reports, I would like to take this time, just going to do a check-in with the comp plan. With, you know, specifically, obviously a lot of conversation we've entertained the last couple of weeks in some of the, the public meetings, planning commission, EDA. Obviously some communication ongoing. You know, some of that, those comments, I guess, you know, you need to sometimes take personal, and you kind of reality check on, are you exactly delivering what the community wanted? So I spent a large portion of the weekend and Monday, you know, again, reading through the RP that was originally at the beginning of the project, and then the checklist that's been assigned from the Met Council, part of the plan, and then just a number of other documents. And, you know, I feel that we're right in line with what was expected at the beginning for the expectations of the plan. And as things have moved on and evolved, I, I believe we've delivered a more robust public outreach that was expected in the RP, and a larger, robust public outreach than a lot of other your surrounding communities might be engaging in. You know, we've been all over a year into that, we've done pop-up meetings, focus groups, you know, you know, just even in the focus groups, you know, you brought in the youth. And just in, you know, your youth to some of the other groups that were, you got a wide variety of ranges of what wants to be seen in the future. So, you know, bringing all that into plan, you're going to have different opinions. There was no direction to do specific advanced studies beyond the minimum requirements. There was pretty clear direction, we wanted a shorter, more usable plan, you know, and, you know, we thought things were going that way, then, you know, the last couple of weeks, there's been some concern brought up. I, I believe that though some of that concern is just a misunderstanding of what's required in the plan that hasn't been shown yet to date. And we spent a whole large portion of time on just goals and objectives, and those are going to be very specific in how to implement the implementation chapters in the projects. And certainly I don't believe this council is ever directing to be more government. I've heard the conversation pretty consistently that, you know, where our limits should be, and, you know, some of the conversation might have been implying that we should have performance standards higher than state and federal requirements within the plan. I don't believe that's the direction that the council wants to go. I assure you, though, that's within the plan, it's going to have all the minimum requirements met. I do want to publicly apologize for our comments I made at the planning commission, where I had a misunderstanding with my water resource engineer, that he specifically met with Carnegie Marine and St. Croix Watershed District, and we have not. As last Tuesday, but before Tuesday and tonight, we have met with them. You guys are aware there's three watershed districts in your community. Some of the people that I was having conversations did not believe me on that, you know, that's side stuff. So we've been, you know, some of the misunderstanding of where your water drains within the community, and those protected resources and the government agencies over top of all that stuff. But since last Tuesday, we have met with Carnegie Marine, and they were actually, say, we're farther along than other communities within their, their watershed, so they think we're sitting good. I don't know how to respond to that, other than yay, I guess we're over exceeding what we're supposed to be doing. We are actually have another meeting set up with them tomorrow, primarily going to be with Marine focus, but still some follow-up stuff that we said we'd bring back to them on this plan. Because typically they'll say they don't respond to anything until the, the public component of it, so we're certainly well ahead of that. I think we've engaged in a number of people in the community that we haven't previously, so, you know, unless, I have to report to you guys at the end of the day, unless there's something you specifically want to see different than what we've been working on or proposing in the plan, we're going to meet the requirements of the Met Council. I would say, you know, primarily we probably have a public hearing in April, May at the latest, and sometime we'll be submitting to the jurisdictions around us and communities in, in June, you know, with final adoption in December of 18. So I just want to check in, make sure you guys' expectations are being met, if there's any questions or concerns. I don't want to talk about it, you know, through emails or anything, I'd rather just publicly talk about it, so that's why I just want to bring it up now. And again, I apologize that I totally misunderstood my water resource engineer, who did not specifically talk to Carnegie Marine on the plan before last Tuesday, but since then, they already have. But he's got other plans going on with the watershed districts, and we have several projects, so it was my bad, you know, I'll take full blame for that.
So the, right now, the, the place where we are, Ryan, is that it's being presented to the planning commission for their discussion, so we're actually not going to even see it until, I mean, we can see it online, of course. But in terms of discussion, the planning commission is going through and then there before we get, and presumably changes could be made based upon their discussion?
I mean, presumably, you could be making changes all the way from June of 18 till December, based on what feedback comes back after those other.
But I mean, they, but they're having the discussion now about it, so.
They are, and then obviously staff levels, and then we'll be bringing it towards the public hearing, and then basically adoption, you know, at a, at a planning, or, planning commission meeting as, as well, before, you know, we go submit it. But there's stuff online, you know, it's being posted, you know, it's pretty easily traceable project, and I just want to make sure that you guys don't question that it's not going to meet the requirements that are clearly identified with a checklist and a system statement you guys have received at the beginning of the year. So just want to bring that up now. Certainly I'm available anytime to address any issues or concerns, I would prefer they go through Neil, is I don't want Neil outside of any conversations. As a city administrator, it's typical of request. But I do want, at the end of the, end of the day, to make sure you guys have a comprehensive comp plan that your community supports and promotes, so it just doesn't, again, sit on the shelf, right? So, and I know you can't 100% address both ends of the spectrum, you know, from youth to the other side, so, you know, it's just something I thought we should bring up, talk about, because there's a lot of things moving in progress. And if there's the, a different direction to be taken, there's not much time to do so, so.
I just, my, my question is just about the pro, the procedure. It's now with the comp plan, I mean, with the planning commission. And so they're the ones that will work, presumably will work through it now, and will give the feedback on it now. I mean, isn't, wasn't that the point of having them get it at this point to give reaction to it, and comment on it, and, and make recommendations, possibly for changes? I don't know if they've done that.
And we did, we did receive some very good comments, you know, one was, you know, specifically the transportation section and on the road extension that was physically wouldn't be possible, that person had knowledge about that land and easy address, that was a great comment. Neil's provided some specific comments on some treatment that's going on in Big Marine Lake that we weren't aware of, that should be in your, your plan, you know, stuff like that. That's, that's the stuff that we should be looking at, not trying to change the goals and objectives and policies that you guys have spent a number of nights and hours on developing.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm just trying, still, so there, the planning commission has had it, looked at it twice now?
Not the, we've been, we've been presenting certain elements.
Different parts of it, right, they, two times they've looked at the comp plan, but two different pieces of it, and they're going to look at it again?
We have additional, I believe we're going to present again in March.
I think in the March meeting is.
Implementation.
Water Resources Implementation and Solid Waste.
Okay, and then is there a time that they're going to get to see it and talk about it, now we've looked at all these pieces, and now we think?
And that will probably be, there will be a public hearing, I think it's scheduled in April.
So that won't be the planning commission?
After, yes, that's the planning commission calls a public hearing.
Okay.
And then after the public hearing, obviously, like any public hearing, there's discussion. So then there'll be time to, you know, clean it up, make any changes before it goes to the council.
Good, okay, I have a better sense now of the, this, the process, the procedure that as we go forward here, that was my question was.
I think you've done a wonderful job of outreach, personally.
All right, let's move here, shift gears. If you look at the first item under miscellaneous, typically in springtime, you guys start getting a lot of traffic requests, right? I think this was just some easy, good literature for you guys. Just came over, as obviously a lot of stop sign requests, speed limit reductions, some of that will help you with answering that, some with your local representatives or property owners. And then I, and on some really happy news, I guess, if you look down at the Winterfest updates, certainly I would say this was our best snow sculpture event ever, and especially the detail. Seeing some of the pictures, pretty, pretty awesome stuff, and we did shift gears a little bit on what we gave to all the participants, instead of the medallions, metal medallions we were doing, we gave them these things, so. I know the kids all had big smiles on that, so it was a great event, glad to have some snow this year, and just, you saw the, the dollar horse and the tacos, you know? It was just unbelievable how, the detail that they had, so.
That's great.
That's all I got, unless you have any questions?
Questions for Ryan, comments, okay, thanks, thank you very much, Ryan. And that moves us on to Andy Pat.
Thank you, Mayor, nothing.
Welcome.
Good to be here again. But nothing new to report, we do have a memo that Andy prepared relative to the reconstruction plan and obligation bond, and I think that's coming out. plan and obligation bond, and I think that's coming out lower on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, and then Adam, Public Works?
Yes, Mayor, city council members, you have before you the Public Works report for January. As you can see, we continue to work on brushing away on the edges of the roads for the 2018 projects. It's going along pretty good, it's been held up a little bit by the cold weather, I'll just give you a heads up on that, but we will get it complete. Down in the sewer water, we had some interesting developments that happened there throughout January. We had one pump replacement that gave out in the middle of the night for somebody, and then we had to replace a couple of floats on a different system, and then heat tape was added to a system, and then we've also replaced one of the control boxes. So as this system ages, we're going to start to see more and more of this. It's 30 years old now, and this is probably the most I've seen in a month since I've been here. There've been little things here and there, but now it's, it's as though it's hitting that point now where things are going to start happening a little more, so we have to be a little conscientious of these, there's going to be some expenses for us coming up.
Are you, are you guys doing this work, or are you subbed out?
Some has to be subbed out, some we can do ourselves, the float replacements and motor replacements, we can do ourselves. When it comes to the high voltage electrical, we can't do it ourselves, so then we have to have somebody else.
Then when you're talking about the control boxes between like the two cabins, if there are the houses or whatever, so the two that share, is that?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Some are in singles and some are in doubles. Then also, as far as Ventor Fest, I kept a little more track this year of the hours and so forth that we spent on it, and I know it's a community event, so the community supports and so forth, which is, which is super great. The thing is though, if it wants to become sustainable, right now, it's about $1,900 to put that on as far as manpower, so to speak, yes. So, just something to keep in mind, the harsh committees are aware of the numbers. I'm sorry about the typo there, Ventor Fest was not removed, it was the signs that were removed, just to let you know. I'm very happy about the progress going on with Leesco right now. They're moving along very well in there, and they've done a lot of removals, so when springtime comes, it's going to be up to us to maintain that buck from, so it doesn't creep up further. Also, not on the report, I did attend a salt symposium about salting roads and road maintenance, and how it's affecting our waters and even wells. The City of Madison has a huge problem in their aquifer right now, and it's going to cost them millions and millions of dollars to replace their water tower because it has gotten into the aquifer. And within, I think they said, seven years, they're going to be able to start tasting it in the water, so they'll have to do a new well, which I think they said was right around $4.5 million left to spend on that. So, I know the City of Scandia is very concerned about that, about our water quality around here with all the water areas that we have, so it might, it might be something to talk about in a work session regarding our snow policy, because in that snow policy, we can make some improvements to use less salt through different practices, so it's something that we may want to talk in a, about in the workshop, and I could bring materials if you wish me to.
Yes, that'd be good.
And that's all I have for now. Unless you have more questions for me?
Questions, anyone? Okay, thanks. Adam, administrative report?
We want to, Deputy Yetter is here.
Welcome back, welcome.
This is Lee Riedelbein speaking.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go backwards, once again, we'll go back this evening, we did it earlier.
Oh, thank you. No, sorry, I was at Dear Parent Night, so a bunch of parents show up, so a lot more questions, I suspected, but through the last month, Ventor Fest was good for the sheriff's office, we only had one fight, which ended up kicking two people out off the rink, I don't know about on rink, but off rink and sent them home and no charges, everything was good on that end, otherwise, uneventful. We had burglary just to the north of Eckelbachen, we had some individuals from northern Minnesota come down, break into a camper, steal some items, and we ended up catching them up in Onamia. So that was kind of a good end to burglary at early in the morning, and we also had a trailer stolen out of the Bliss Edition from a construction site. A couple of other self-initiated arrests with one narcotic arrest, otherwise, it was a calm month, so, any questions?
Any questions for?
Thank you.
Yep.
And that brings us to our administrative report.
Still trying to work out the animal control issue, thanks to Jim, we had a discussion with River Town, except they don't, they are not inclined to board more than overnight, unfortunately. However, Northwoods, I pleaded with them that we're only one dog a month, that's always average, and would they please allow us to take their, our one dog a month up there, and they are going to take that to their board, so there may be an opportunity there, which would be quite nice. The Lions, the foundation's received a donation to look at making the entrances to the community building handicap accessible. Adam is starting to get pricing on that, I think the cost is going to be more than $2,000, but somehow, some way, you know, maybe we can ask them for a little bit more money, or at some point in time, maybe the city could contribute. I know in the past, I think I noted there that for 2010 election, there were Help America Vote grants available for these upgrades, but there's nothing available.
What are you planning on doing now? What that isn't, what do you need to do?
I think, you know, like push buttons.
Okay, is that what it is? Automate it?
Automate it.
All right.
Yep. LED lighting project in here that was in the capital budget is done, I mean, as you can see from this room, actually, the whole room's on demers, but the, the whole building has been done, so we should be able to, because we have been tracking through the Green Step program, our electrical use, we'll be able to really see what that reduction is. It's, actually, it's a pretty smooth process, and I think the room is much, much brighter and without all the different colors of shade, of shades of lighting, it's actually quite nice. We talked about it at the work session, the potential sale of the Goose Lake Linda Lane lot, I'm expecting an appraisal, hopefully, we'll be able to talk about that at the March work session. Lakes Area TV, we've had some preliminary discussions with them about what's going to happen after June 30th, when we withdraw from Forest Lake Cable. They are interested in us to continue to provide accounting services, I've asked for information about what, what the charge would be to the city for them to continue filming and, you know, you know, our meetings, so that will again be probably either a council or work session discussion. Just a couple other things to promote, I know we talked about it at the EDA, and this is really done through the county. This month, or actually effective March 1, the county board has approved the county CDA to create a pre-development grant fund that will provide funds for, to stimulate economic development for pre-development costs on projects, be it, you know, wetland termination surveys and stuff like that. Depending upon the amount, it does require a local match, for $10,000, $40,000, $40,000 is maxed, 50/50, for less than $10,000, it is only a 20% match, which is quite nice. I included in your packet kind of a summary on the open business program, and it was, they gave us a recap of the first six months in Western County. Nice in there is that they serve six Scandia clients, which is, you know, which is always helpful, and these are really, you know, consulting services to small businesses. I think the final thing that I would like to point out is, this is pre-audit, where we are at, where we ended up for the year. If you look at 17 budget, we had planned to run a $500,000 deficit, and the reason for that was, that's very close to the amount of the transfer that was made from the general fund to the local road improvement fund, so it's really not, we're operating a deficit, we're just moving the excess money. Because we did well in terms of controlling expenditures, and we also had a great year in terms of build, in terms of building permits, where we had budgeted for the balance in the general fund to go down by about a half million dollars, it only went down about $73,000. So we had a good year, and that leads us to making, as we discussed in the budget, taking the excess funds through our fund balance policy and moving it over to capital projects. But this is probably, I don't anticipate, you know, there will be some adjustments to that number, but they will be minor at best. So that's all I have.
And also, the, just to point out, the, we are getting, going to have, be recognized by the League of Municipalities Conference for our Green Step City Step Two, we are on Step Two now.
Yes.
And that also, that, that entitles us, the businesses, you talk about that with it, RETEP?
That's one of the programs that is available to Scandia businesses, they have a program called RETEP, which is Retire Environmental Technical Assistance Program, and they are retired executives who will provide energy efficiency and regular, and waste reduction assessments to small businesses. And that is free, information on that is on the city's website under Economic Development, as is the information for the loan program, pre-development loan program and open to business. So the more we can push it, the better off we are.
Okay, any questions for Neil? All right, and that brings us to the general business then. First up is discussion on approval of the 2018 annual operating plan for Tiller Corporation.
So this is the time of year, every year, when we get an application from Tiller Corporation for their annual operating permit for the Scandia mine. They give us a very detailed report about what has gone on at the mine this year, how it compares to what they're planning for next year. Neil and I do a site visit to check out how the site looks and to see if they've complied with conditions, and there's a table at the front part of your report that goes condition by condition through the conditional use permit and the annual operating permit, both for the old Scandia mine and the Dressel site, which they added to it, and the conclusion is that they have complied with the conditions of their permit this year. Leggett, Brushears, and Graham analyzes the groundwater data that they provide to us every year, makes recommendations about that, they found no issues with the groundwater this year, there was no mining into the groundwater this year, there may be next year, but they are still well within the depth that they're allowed to mine in their conditional use permit. The one issue on the site this year last May was during some excavations on the Dressel site, they encountered some contaminated soils, smelled like diesel oil, they reported it to the PCA right away, which is what they're required to do, they hired someone to deal with the soils, to take them out and dispose them, and then they completed the monitoring at the site, and no additional action is needed based on that, so they took care of that issue. Generally, there was less going on at the site this year than the previous year, and that's because the Zaveral mining process ended, and they're no longer hauling all the ad rock from the Zaveral site to this site, so the amount of ad rock moving in went down, the number of truck trips on a daily basis went down. The activity next year is expected to be pretty similar to what went on this year. The two complaints the city received about their operations this year were related to trucking. One was a concern that a neighbor was hearing trucks before daylight on Lofton, they're not allowed to haul on Lofton until after daylight. Turns out, talking to Tiller, it probably was not their trucks, it was someone else who was doing some trucking on Lofton. And the other complaint was from someone who was concerned about the fact that they were bringing ad rock and other materials for recycling onto the site using 218th Street. Their conditional use permit allows them to do that, and allows them to bring in the kind of materials they're bringing in, they use the ad rock to mix with the other rock on site, and they recycle concrete and bituminous on their site, and they are allowed to do that, so we've been able to answer those questions. So this, the other thing that's interesting this year, they've been doing some reclamation on the site, the site plan for next year shows that a big part of that Dressel site will all be reclaimed by the end of next year, and they'll be mining more at the core of the site and dealing with all that material they've hauled over from Zaveral. They're currently updating their watershed permit, we have some comments from Jim Shaver about what they need to do as a part of that permit update, and that's in process, and they will need to provide the city a copy of that permit once it is approved. But other than that, the conditions for next year are very similar to this year, because they're not going to have any big issues this year on the site, unless you guys want to make any changes to the conditions. Staff recommend approving the AOP for next year with the conditions that you have on the last page of the report.
Any questions for Sherry?
This predates me so long, how long do we anticipate this mine to be continuing its operations?
Well, there is no end game on this one, they can continue as long as the material is there. The Zaveral one was really unusual in having a timeline, but this conditional use permit does not, and I don't know if it's, you know, business-wise, if you guys want to, how long, or if you even know, but there is nothing in the conditional use permit that would end it.
Do you not mean?
Yeah, you can, sure.
Okay. How long? How long is always the question in everyone's minds? Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow council members, my name's Christina Morrison, I'm with Tiller Corporation, and to answer your question, a lot of the time, we get that question fairly regularly, and it's not a simple one to answer, I mean, at that site, it's a relatively large site, and I think generally, based on the amounts of material there and current market demand, it could be anywhere from 30 to 40 years or plus, I mean, we have, we also have vertically, we're able to mine into the groundwater, and we've just started to do that, so, but it's all just really based on market demand, so, which has been pretty good out there these last couple of years.
30, 40 years, that's close enough.
Yeah, right. And the groundwater, the mining into the groundwater thing, this predates a lot of us, but there was an EAW done on that, that actually resulted in the depth that you can mine to, so that's been an option for you guys for a long time, it just hasn't been something you've needed to do much.
Go ahead. Any other questions for Christina, while she's up here?
All right, I have one on the conditions, but maybe now isn't a good time to?
Well, it's fine. Get on board.
Okay.
All right, so, and this is, you know, in the staff report, you make the differentiation, but on condition number two and condition number three, both of those conditions are referring to the minimum mining excavation, but one of them's really tied to the Dressel site, and one of them's tied to the balance of the site, I don't know if we?
Which one is the Dressel one?
Dressel is 922.
Okay, so after number two, we'll just put Dressel site?
Sure, and then there's the balance of the Scandia mine, however, is that?
Is number three?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions, further questions for Sherry? And is there a motion?
I'm going to adopt resolution, the number 02-20-18-02, approving the annual operating permit.
With, with conditions as amended?
With conditions.
As amended?
Yep, as amended.
About seconded?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Law in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay. So that brings us to approving the street reconstruction plan and authorizing issuance and sale of bonds. Yes, Neil?
Pat?
Pat?
Pat or Jessica?
I'd be happy to.
Mayor, council, so I think Andy did a great job in outlining essentially what the public process is, excuse me, when approving a reconstruction plan, so you do, of course, have the plan before you, we went through that public hearing process earlier this evening, so what you have in front of you tonight is a resolution that provides that provides for the adoption of that reconstruction plan and the preliminary authorization of the sale of bonds. Again, that would be the 2018 A Series, general obligation reconstruction bonds for the city of Scandia. We do have a preliminary schedule for you, debt schedule, related to the sale of debt. What we have here is a bond issue size of around four-point-four million. The plan does allow for up to four-point-five, and so does the resolution, just to provide for any little cushion that we might see in terms of when the bids come in, so that we have a little bit of room there. But again, we did run that schedule at four-point-four million. There is a planned equity contribution coming from the city of around two million dollars. And I would just commend the council and staff, of course, for squirreling away a large sum of money. This is a significant project for the city. Again, it's much larger than any of the debt the city has issued in the past. So, the fact that you're only issuing about two-thirds of the cost of the project is rather significant. So, and certainly, that'll be looked favorably when we go through that rating process. So, again, we've got a size of around four-point-four. Neil did run through essentially what that debt payment's going to be or what we anticipate that being, around four-hundred thousand dollars a year. But again, you've got monies that you've been putting aside for the road and bridge fund or for Public Works, and that those will be essentially reduced now that you have this debt payment coming on each year, so that the levy won't be impacted too greatly. As far as the schedule, we've held the public hearing. Once that thirty-day referendum period expires in March, what we'll do is go ahead and schedule a rating call. And again, Northam will work with staff. And any of you that would like to participate are certainly welcome. But we'll go through the financials, any sort of policy things that we need to kind of be aware of as we go through that rating process. We'll start working with staff on that. What we would anticipate is a sale of bonds in May, which would allow for proceeds to be available in middle of June, so that those funds are on hand once you get those first pay requests, so that you're able to pay for those. So, again, you do have a resolution before you that allows you to adopt the reconstruction plan and call for the preliminary authorization of the sale of the Street Reconstruction Bonds Series 2018A.
Thank you.
That's a lot, I know. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions, or Jessica?
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? And if not, the resolution? All in?
I move resolution oh-two, twenty-eighteen, oh-three, for the adopting a street reconstruction plan and preliminary authorization, authorizing the issuance and sale of street reconstruction bonds.
Sherry?
Any further discussion?
Second.
Yep, I heard second. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
All in? Opposed? All right. And that brings us to discussion on approving the plans for the 2018 street improvement project and authorizing advertisements for bids. You can take that, Ryan?
Ryan? Mayor, City Council, request an action item tonight to approve plans and specs and advertisement for bids for the 2018 street improvement project. I do have a plan set here. It's right now ninety-six pages. So, the schedule that's within two, obviously, is flexible and, you know, opening bids after that thirty-day period that you just heard about. And then, we would have the award. And then, you know, your sale of your bonds would be after that. But we really don't anticipate a first payment to a contractor in maybe May if we're lucky, but most likely, it would be June because of load restrictions and stuff like that. The project, you know, as we've talked about, is basically scope of work, ditch to ditch. So, count full debt reclamation. Some areas, we're adding class five to thickness section. At the end, it'll have shoulders, guardrails being replaced, number of culverts, driveway and road culverts. But some ditching in areas that need to have improved ditching, all-new signage for the signs that don't meet retroflectivity standards. And then, as normal, the city's signs, streetlights signs will be replaced and ordered by Public Works. You see the schedule then. So, with that, if there's not any questions, we look for formal authorization or approval on plans and specifications and authorize advertisement for bids for the 2018 street improvement project.
Any questions for Ryan?
I did have one question. In terms of shoulders, we're not talking about widening rubs necessarily. Are we talking about paving shoulders or leaving of the way they are now?
We're not looking to increase the footprint of your projects. You just don't have established shoulder in some spots, so it'll be about a foot. And then, grass, over time, will grow into that area, but you're just going to have that base up the sides, especially with garbage trucks, stuff like that. Now, we will bump out the pavements at driveways and mailbox, unknown mailbox locations, just to protect the edge of pavement. So...
Further questions? If somebody want to make a motion then?
It's the same one?
We don't have a number. It's just? It's just approved plans and specifications?
No, it's not a resolution, it's just? I move we adopt the plans.
And specifications?
Plans and specifications.
Specifications?
Second.
And authorize advertisements for the bid?
Yep.
Okay. We got a first and a second, man. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, next is discussion on the question Cycling Scandia to designate the warming house as a gathering place. And again, John Schron.
Good evening. My name is John Schron. And I presume all of you are very anxious to end the bicycling like I am for the spring. But I chaired one of the subcommittees of Cycling Scandia called The Gathering Place. And Mayor Maewski and Dale Sederholm worked with me on that. We looked at about six sites within Scandia that we thought would be potentially, potential for a gathering place. And of those six sites, we determined that the most appropriate spot would be the area around the warming house. But obviously, it's city property and we just can't walk in there and start to make improvements or whatever. So, what I'm really seeking tonight is really just a conceptual approval that the city would be amenable to us using the spot around the warming house as a gathering place. Now, we don't have, we don't have specific plans, but we need, we need to identify the gathering place so we can start to develop plans in terms of the specific amenities that should be on the site, in terms of the priorities, in terms of when those amenities will be put in place, how we're going to fund those amenities and whatever. Until we, until we can really pinpoint what that gathering place or where that gathering place is going to be, we really can't start to develop our plans. So, the purpose is, again, just for the city to say, yes, we're amenable to allowing Cycling Scandia to use that site to start to develop a gathering place. Now, everything will be subject in the future in terms of the specific details, the city review and city approval or whatever. And the other point I want to make is that we're not, we don't anticipate we're going to be looking to the city to fund any of those amenities. We'll have to come up with our own funding strategies on that. So, with that, I open it up for questions.
You mentioned, John, around the warming house several times, so there would be no in the warming house?
No, I don't, no, not in the warming house. The only thing I would anticipate, for example, in the survey that was taken, the number-one amenity that most cyclists want at a stopping point or a starting point is water. So, I recognize that there is water available that's drinkable in the warming house. So, what we anticipate would be able to maybe extend that water lines to the outside and have a water fountain outside during the warm weather that is available to cyclists, you know, twenty-four-seven. So, but other than that, I don't, I wouldn't want the responsibility of having people going into the warming house using the facilities that are unsupervised or whatever.
I think, for you of Laila last year, we talked about a grant for a bike fixing station, which came too quickly and never came to fruition. But it was something to do with the funding and grants available with it that required it to be basically on city property. And we had actually talked about the warming house as being a spot that that might be appropriate. So...
And for many of those grants, my understanding, and Janie can probably respond, is it really requires a sponsorship of the city in a sense to be the grantee or whatever it is.
What would you do for bathroom facilities?
Well, again, as I've indicated, I assume each of you, we shared with the sheet I provided, would be provide a port-alet at some spot on the gathering place. As to where that is, I don't know what's the most appropriate spot. But the idea, again, was we provide a port-alet and for Cycling Scandia, absorb the cost of that, et cetera. So...
Any other questions?
Having a portable toilet removes the maintenance issue.
Right.
We don't want to load more work into Public Works.
Yeah.
We have weekend use of a facility that they got to clean up.
Right. And that's why I wouldn't want to go in the warming house because it's unsupervised and it's secondary and you have your maintenance issues. And you will have maintenance issues.
I think it's worthwhile doing what we can to support it.
Okay. Would somebody like to, we have a motion on this? There are three?
Do you just want a consensus or something?
Yeah, just, just, you know, I guess, is the city amenable to us using that facility? Again, subject to review of plans and designs, et cetera. Obviously, you don't have the details in that regard, but it's just the idea that we can start to plan around utilizing that site, that area around there.
We do have four options that were presented to us. And the recommendation was, for option one, endorse the concept of using the warming house as a gathering place. And three, refer the request to the Parks and Rec Committee for further discussion. So, you know, one or other of those, or are you going to be involved in working with the Park and Rec is part of this?
Right. I think going forward, we'll try to go through the Park and Rec in terms of the future request or whatever reviews.
So, if we have a motion that that's the direction we'd like them to go, I think that would be good?
Yeah. I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
So, we're referring the request to the parks?
Well, that they will be working with the park.
You kind of approve the concept, but run it through the parks?
Yeah. In terms of details, going forward, we'll run it through the Parks and Rec first.
All right?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, John, for your great work. Thank you, Janie, for your great work. All right. And that brings us up to discussion on the assessors' request to modify their fee schedules.
We received a request a week or so ago from Chase Palms, our assessor, seeking an increase in the fee. His request on the increase is really based on additional requirements that the imposed by the Department of Revenue and the assessors that, you know, entail considerably more work. And talking to the county about this, one of the things that has changed at the county is now, where before he only had to enter into the county system building permit information for new construction, now he has to enter into their assessment system, roofing permits, window permits, siding permits, all the other small permits. So, he's seeking an increase, you know, to compensate himself for that. And I think the workload has changed from when we agreed to it. I did talk to the county about, because we're one of the few communities that employs a local assessor. And, you know, everybody else is using the county, I think, theirs. I think, and I have in my staff report. There's only three assessors for seven communities in the county. But talking to the county, you know, their cost would be probably another ten percent more than what Chase is seeking.
How much more work does that, I mean, is it just a matter of logging in the computer that there was a permit for a roof? Does he have to go and look at it or anything?
I don't believe he has to go look at it. I think it's all based upon permits. But obviously, I mean, you look at doing, you know, that's the bulk of our permits in any year, you know, like last year.
Questions for Neil?
I don't have any questions. I guess I got some issues with that. I get, you know, another four thousand dollars, then he wants it the next couple of years after. We had a storm come through this year. You know, and all he has to do is log in those permits. And I'm kind of going back to the, how many permits were issued in January eighteen? And I got to flip back again, but he, there's seven, he does five out of seven communities besides his full-time job, and he's asking for another four thousand dollars. I guess I got, got an issue with that.
And I had, I?
It's too much money.
I think I was anticipating that and I had asked him, because right now, it's, you know, he has a flat fee and ten dollars per, you know, per permit after that. And my sister said, why don't you keep it, keep the fee the same and just expand with the charge per permit? But he was not willing to consider that.
What other choice do we have?
I can advertise for another assessor.
Yeah.
I guess, I think it's pretty borderline to ask for forty-three hundred bucks. And then, he wants it, I read somewhere that he wants to continue that for the next few years too, right?
He actually started a five-year contract.
Yeah, there you go.
For, yeah, for nineteen and twenty assessment years. So, two more years.
There's seven, seven communities are served by three assessors and Chase is servicing five of those. And he has a full-time job besides.
No. I don't, I mean, we don't want that.
Oh, I do know that.
I'm not sure that that's part of what we should be talking about.
I think what he's talking about is the extra workload from the extra building permits that came in this year, and they were all rough sightings of windows. And he doesn't, he doesn't even have to go out to them. I think four thousand dollars for three years, I think it's, I think it's online, in my opinion.
How long have we been working with this gentleman?
Since two thousand fifteen?
Fifteen.
Two years.
I thought it just recently had a change.
And why do we have a change of that?
Frank retired.
And this guy said if he'd come in and pick it up at the same cost and a year and a half later, he wants a twenty-one percent increase?
It's a big increase.
It is a big increase.
Four thousand is twenty percent.
So, other than the county, what are other options? And negotiate?
We can try to negotiate or else just go off for RFPs?
How many other communities? Let's see. There are, so there are seven communities in Washington. Two others besides.
Yeah, you have, I think, there are two assessors who have one community each. And Chase has five others, and the county has everybody else.
Can you say the county?
Potentially, there are others in our area that we could?
Oh, there's assessors all over the place. The county is ten percent higher than these guys are?
He said it would be about twenty-seven thousand a year. I can get a proposal for a formal proposal.
Yeah. I guess I'd be for an RFP myself. Sends a message.
So, what is the termination clause? So, if he gets upset, does he walk in thirty days?
Ninety.
Ninety?
Ninety.
Do we see proposals within ninety, before ninety days?
Sure. Get them due in thirty days.
Okay.
I mean, just because we went for RFPs two years ago, you know, it's just a matter of getting that request proposal updated.
Okay.
And get that in.
Okay. I think it'd be good to see the numbers.
Yeah. It doesn't hurt to look, I guess. You know, it is what it is. But, you know, when I read this thing, it kind of?
Make a motion, we go up for an RFP.
Yeah. I mean, I understand, things change and he wants more money, but that's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. We've had a motion, we've had a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to proposal for the purchase of a pickup truck to replace the 2008 Ford Ranger.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. We have a program and it coincides with many of the other communities throughout the United States. We replace equipment on a regular schedule, so it does not get too old and we do not starting to have a bunch of major problems, major repairs. And then, pretty soon, it's not worth anything when we resell it. So, the one that we are looking to replace here is the 2008 Ford Ranger, which is a two-wheel-drive pickup. And we are planning on replacing it with a three-quarter-ton standard cab. When I originally set it into the CIP, the club cabs were at a purchase price that we could have made it happen with the purchase of the plow with some of the prices you see loaded on there. With the increased demand on those pickups, the price went past that price point. So, we only had one vehicle where that would work. And I thought the council would like more than one choice to? And I thought the council would like more than one choice to pick, so what I did was redirected myself to a standard cab, rather than going with the club cab, and that saved us enough money to do a couple of different options that way. So it actually gave us a better opportunity to have a pickup and make some transitions to another vehicle we already have in the fleet, that would make it more of a work vehicle and more suitable for us to maintain some of the road conditions that we have in the community. Those road conditions I'm referring to are gravel roads and then transitioning to blacktop roads. So we have a one-ton, it's actually bigger than one-ton, so basically a one and a half ton, it's a Ford 550. And through this purchase, if we were to go with staff's recommendation here, we would have enough money to put a plow frame on that vehicle as well as the new vehicle, so if one or the other were to break down, we could transition the plow from the one vehicle to the other and be able to use it on both vehicles. And with that, then, the next purchase that we would make the following year, we could also then just purchase a-
Mow kit.
The plow and frame and not have to purchase an extra controller, because we could actually get two controllers, we'd have enough funds to do that right off the bat. So my suggestion is laid out there. The reason, a couple of reasons I am supporting the Dodge over the Chevy, although Chevy does have a great record for not breaking down and being a very reliable vehicle, is that the powertrain warranty for the Dodge is five years, 60,000 miles, whereas all the other units are three years, 36,000 miles. So the powertrain is one of those things that, the way we use it with plowing and so forth, is one of the things that you're probably most concerned with, being reliable and so forth, and then also the costs involved if there need to be a replacement.
Does the plow want to work?
The only additional cost would be the $65 for tabs. And the other reason for the transition is that if everybody is out, I have the two, the two part-time up plowing and then all the full-time staff up plowing, then there's really nothing else for me to help with if we get a larger snowstorm like the eight-incher that we had last time. So why not use me as a resource, I'm already here anyhow, so it only makes sense to have another plow with the vehicle onboard.
Okay. Any questions for Adam, or comments?
How many miles around the 2008?
It's at 47,000 right now, which doesn't seem like a lot, except for it's a four-cylinder Ranger that has stopped and gone probably a few thousand times here throughout the city, and it's getting very tired. You can tell with the shifting of it that there's probably some issues in the future. And the other issue is that it has an airbag recall right now. So in some ways, we probably shouldn't even be driving it, but there are some days where there isn't a choice.
Why don't we get the recall fixed?
Because they don't have bags ready. Since Tamaka went down, we've been testing bags from other manufacturers, and they aren't going to move until they know those bags are going to work and they aren't going to have another recall.
So what do you use the truck for now, this one? I don't know, it says pull a small trailer and that type of thing, but I mean, is it-
It's basically transportation, it's like a car with, a car with a space in the back to throw some tools and extra things if you need it, so.
Part-time summer maintenance person uses it to haul equipment out to a site, you know, running around if, you know, they go pick up parts or whatnot.
So you're going to replace it with a dump truck and a ball, or a, yeah, one-ton? I guess, how many, how many pickup trucks with plows you got now? A couple of them now, right?
3/4-ton, yes, we have two.
Yeah, and you need, you know, is the warranty still good when you put a plow in that truck for the drive chain? They're going to handle it, tranny on it, really?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like you're not doing apples for apples, you're taking a two-wheel drive Ranger and you're trading it in for a one-ton plow truck for running air, and you already got two plow trucks, which we never had before, we always did our roads with the big trucks, I don't know why we need three of them, I guess.
So what we do-
My opinion.
We have 73 coffee sacks and hammerheads.
You know, and never had a pickup to do them either until a little while ago, and it's, whatever. Not going to get into that discussion again, but I think another dump truck and ball right now, one-ton.
Well, snow season's almost over too, I don't know, I don't see the need to jump on this frankly, right now.
You know, you got a little park runner truck, that Ranger, that's what it was for, that, you know, the fire chief was going to use it for a while, and that's what it was for. In essence, you're just trading that and using it to get another pickup truck and ball. Again, I don't, why don't you use a grader if you got nothing to use, you got to use the snow?
Because, do you really want to know the truth about the grader trying to use it for snow?
Yeah.
Our roads are only 22 feet wide in many spots.
Yeah.
If you have an oncoming car, it's not going to get by you, not with your average driver. With a really good driver on a windy day, yes. With a very average driver, you're not going to make it past-
That's with the wing down, right?
No, that's just with the blade down.
Oh, no, you can get by that truck, that thing, on any one of our roads. Anyway.
Other questions? Other comments?
Well, I guess, based on some of the other comments here, what's the urgency of this?
You know, it's, it's on the schedule to be replaced, and if you don't start replacing your equipment, pretty soon you're going to have an expense down the road that you probably don't want. Truthfully speaking, I give that transmission a year. That thing has stopped and started so many times, it's, it's getting worn.
Why won't we replace it with a replacement? Another Ranger or something, a parts runner, why we got to spend $3,000, $10,000? I know you went through the whole deal, but that's, that's just my, you know, you keep talking about replacement, you're not replacement, you're upgrading like three times what you're at that.
The basic maintenance on this vehicle and the mileage is the same as what the Ranger's getting, I checked on the Ranger. It gets 14 miles to the gallon in the winter. Might as well have a vehicle that you can actually get some use out of and do some plowing and work with. If we go to run and get parts and you put something over 100 pounds in the back of this thing, you're driving it through front end up in the air. The leaf springs in the back were not made to haul a trailer, it's been hauling the trailer for-
No, no, you got two other pickups though. I'm done.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, it's, we can either follow the program or the option is that, yeah, we don't move ahead on this.
I think the other option is to bring back quotes for a smaller, a smaller pickup truck, that would be more of a run-around truck. And I think we can do that.
Now, this point is that if you have, if you're going to have one, have it be a multipurpose truck.
Right.
That's what you're saying. It would be, I think it would be, I would like to see something more comparable to this, maybe a four-wheel-drive vehicle, but a smaller, just for cost purposes, for comparison, just to see what it would be at this point in time.
All of the one pickups, what are yours and those?
We've got a, the other one that we're supposed to replace this year, but we pushed off till next year, is a 2008 3500. And that we've already spent, again, another Ford, which is renowned for the manifold gaskets going on on. So we've already spent $2,000 on that one, along with the tranny job on it. So we're up to over four grand on that one already, and that's a 2008.
That's the one that should be replaced with the one you're talking about here.
And then the, the other one, the 2011 3/4-ton, that's also had that manifold replaced on it, and that was a $2,000 job. That's a 14. So, and we could, we could actually move that direction if you wanted to, Mr. Schneider, because if you, if we go ahead with the next proposal, what that would do is that would take, the reason we have the one-ton is because that's the only thing that can hold that sander on the back of it. So if we replace that one instead, that is an option, and we have this unit then to be on the next proposal, and then get a plow frame on that truck, then we're, we're even Steven again. As far as having work trucks that will really work and that will really be able to haul material and so on.
Boy, you're struggling, that sounds almost better.
Is that, how does that sound to you, Joe?
You know, I'd rather replace one of the pickup, two pickups I got and use them the way they're using them than have a third one. And then when this one gets junky, you're not going to get anything for it. The 2008 that's been plowing and carrying a sander and probably rust, going to be rusted through and through. Replace that truck, I think. This parts runner truck, I don't see replacing that with a, I guess it's a wash, if, you know, but when you come back with the 2008 Ford, 3/4-ton or one-ton or whatever with the plow, I'd want to replace that, you're going to want another one like it or comparable, so you got, and we're just, we're getting away from the little parts runner truck, is what we're doing, I guess. Whether you do it now or you do it later, with this truck or that truck, I guess it doesn't matter.
I like the idea of replacing the, the current plow truck, the other 2008 with a similar vehicle rather than, I agree with you on that. Yeah.
Then use the older one, you know, for running around until we replace that one.
But then do we need, do we need the numbers on that? If that's what we're going to replace, we're going to replace, we're going to have to look at you.
Well, that would be this truck.
This truck.
Right.
This truck would replace that other one that we've got, that bigger one that we've got now?
My understanding is that instead of replacing the 2008 Ranger, what the proposal on the board here would be to replace the 2008 F-3500 and leave the Ranger alone for this year and look at it again, maybe next year, replacing it with something comparable.
Okay, so my question is, these proposals that you have would replace that one?
Yes.
Yes, that would work, that replacement truck would work if the next proposal for a tailgate sander on the F-50 is a go, because we need something to haul gravel to do our gravel roads.
Okay.
And that's what that F-350 is used for right now.
So should we talk about that first and put them, or put them together as a package in the discussion then? Because Adam was saying it would make sense to do that, to replace that bigger one, if we then also agree to purchase the tailgate sander.
Works for me. You know, maybe it's all about the money that we, but you know, there's three, four guys over there, and there's five, six trucks, where I'm going with.
You don't think we need to replace any of them? Is that how you're feeling?
That's kind of my opinion. I'm not going to make a motion on this deal because it's, to me, we got too many vehicles over there now.
Bob, you want to, how are you feeling about it?
I think we should get another proposal that replaces what we have.
The Ranger?
Information by which to make a decision.
You made a proposal for the Ranger?
Yeah.
With a more comparable.
And then we, then we can take a look and compare more equally what we're looking at. Is that, that okay for you?
Yeah, we can-
I mean, that should be pretty quick.
Well, it only goes as quick as the auto dealers want to get back to you. So, but I could have something to get-
We can do it, we got, we got an inside track there.
Stepping in my office, right, Chris?
Get a Chevy, cool.
So I think what we can do is bring back next month, kind of the different options and packages.
Yeah. That would be good. So just, you bet them off, we've got multiple ones we're talking about tonight. So we won't have the discussion on the, the tailgate sander tonight, that'll be part of the package that we'll discuss next time.
If you want to wait, you can. My suggestion is if you, if you're even considering making that move, you make it now before the end of winter, because you could probably sell your, your, the old sander now this time of year before the end of winter, for somebody that maybe has burned theirs out at the end of the year. Otherwise, we're going to be hanging onto it all summer long before we're going to be able to have a good sell price point on it. Which we can do, we can store it all, all summer long.
And we'll just, we'll put it up for auction as soon as we, that truck is free.
Yeah.
Are you saying hold on it tonight?
Hold on it tonight.
Do we buy those against state contract or anything?
Yes.
Yeah, we get these on state contracts, and what I did was I included at the very end down there, you'll see also a price for, because I went to a local dealer on my own time on the weekend and asked them for prices too, and they sent me quotes, and if you look at that, boy, you can see what kind of a deal we're getting on these trucks. We could actually probably turn around and sell them after using it for three years and break even.
I'll, I'll, soon before we can get bids on this, I guess my more of going is it would be probably better to talk about it at a work session, we're going to kind of bog down on this in a regular meeting.
Yeah. We have something by the work session?
I could have something at work, if, if they're cooperative on the other end, I can have something by this work session.
All right. So we'll move this discussion then to the work session.
One quick question for the council.
Yeah.
Do you want me to consider proposing that 350 be exchanged or still stick with the Ranger being?
We'll look at all the alternatives.
Yeah, we're looking at various alternatives.
Okay.
Okay, that moves us to talking about 2018 dust control.
Mayor, City Council, I went through the same process as last year. Some of the comments I got from citizens were, some, some a little mixed on it, some said it was actually a lot better than the previous years, some said it got a little dusty at the end. Most of them seemed pretty, pretty happy with the results that they had. People still don't like that there's that one or two days right in the beginning where it's wet and they drag all the stuff into their garage, and then, you know, the garage floor is wet for the next month and a half, so. But that's what Calson Thorey does, so.
The comments I've been hearing is it just rusts the heck out of your vehicles to the people that live on them roads.
Yeah.
Just deteriorates immediately.
But by putting it down at the rates that they did last year, but cutting, reducing it, I heard was much better than previous years.
Yeah, and then you hear the people that say, yeah, we got to have it because it's so dusty.
Well, yeah, you know, until you can get rid of the gravel roads, you're going to have dust, you're going to have to do something about it.
I had a bit worked on.
Didn't we do a test deal or something last year or something? Aren't you going to try something?
Well, that's basically what we did, is we tried these different rates and two applications rather than one. And it was fortunate enough that we also had some nice moisture during those times when they were applied, so I think that helped as well. So I think it stayed longer and lasted longer just by doing it that way. Plus, the people that were recommending again this year, NSI, I think they have a real good understanding of what they're doing out there. I think they're, they really have kind of bought into the business and really wanted to do a good product. So I think that's part of it.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to award the Calson Thorey application for dust control to NSI.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move to go on that one. Next is a discussion on the transfer of funds to the Park Improvement Fund. And Councilman Ron Miller, we'll let you go on this one.
Well, after our workshop, I went, I went home and the last, next couple of days, I having some second thoughts and reconsiderations about stuff, and I, our conversation at the workshop- workshop basically centered around the fact that, uh, we think the Park and Rec Committee wants to make some changes, would like to see them be more proactive, and it seems as though the fact that they have a negative balance in their fund is beneficent to them being more proactive, and I'm just afraid of if, if we've got to wait for appraisals and we've got to go out and see the site sometime in the spring, and then we have to decide whether we're actually going to do something about it, then we have to put it up for sale if we decide we're going to do it. We're talking about a several-month process here, and if we're all pretty much in agreement that we want to resolve that fund balance and we have a four-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus from last year, I'm just saying I think we should act tonight and transfer funds from that surplus into the Park Fund and show them the support that they need and get them moving in a proactive fashion now rather than waiting several months to do exactly the same thing. I just suggested a hundred thousand, because I wasn't exactly sure what, what the Park Fund was right now, but there needs to cover that balance and, and have some more.
Sets up the process.
As long as it's kickstarting the process. We're not spending any money, we're just moving it from one pocket to another, showing them that we, we support them and this is what we want them to do, and it's just doing well.
So practically, what would this mean? When would it, would it be money that would have to be spent within a period of time?
There's not any money, no.
No.
There's no money spent.
It's there for them and if they wanted to use it, but, um, it's, if it's not used...
Yeah, it's not really for them to use, it's for, allow them to plan improvements to bring forward to the council.
They know that it's there.
Right, because right now, if you look at it, they're hamstrung because, you know, because when we put the parking lot in there, they've been in a negative balance.
Right.
Until those, those funds come in.
So is it, is that lot going to be sold and that's going to go to the park? Is it in rec? Is that, is that a done deal or what?
No, no.
No, I didn't know.
That's the problem.
Yeah, we'll bring back, probably the appraisal, the work session, then we'll, then we can make a decision as to if we're going to sell that and what we can reasonably expect.
So you're saying you're going to borrow them a hundred thousand dollars if they can't use it?
This is the way all of our funds work. They're setting up this fund that they can, they, they know that there's...
They know it's there.
When they come up with a project and it's three, four, five thousand, whatever, they make a proposal to the council, if the council approves it, we know where the money's coming from. It doesn't have to be spent at the end of the year, it doesn't pour back into something else.
But does it go back into that where we took it from then, from them, when we sell that lot or something?
You could make, you could make that provision very easily.
Yeah, I would definitely consider that, you know? I'm just saying, I don't want to wait for that appraisal and that whole long process if that sells more.
Well, again, you're talking like that lot's going to be sold and it's going to the park.
Well, exactly. Yeah, that, we're going to be sitting here.
We have not, but we have not formally said that.
Well, I agree with the process, we still have to have some conditions of, of reutilization.
And I think when the parking lot had to be done, we came forward with the money regardless. It doesn't matter where it's coming out of the general fund, I think this is just that, if it's a knee-jerk reaction, I, I just leave the money where it is and if they need something, we'll give it to them.
It's a psychological thing for the people in that department.
And that's what we talked about before. I worked in private business for over forty years, and I have never seen a place that says you have to have money in the bank before you come up and find a reason to spend it. It's always been find a reason to spend it and we'll give you the money, but for whatever reason, our government doesn't work that way. So if that's the way it's got to work, let's get some money in the fund and let them...
I think, Steve, the reason it doesn't work that way is because it hasn't worked that way.
And it's not a business.
It is not.
No, it's not a business, I understand that.
But in point of fact, when the park, we have, this, the council has not been, been open to giving the park, saying we're going to support you. What I've heard, and before I became mayor, what I would hear was, there's still that debt, there's still that debt for the paving of the, of Loesgoken, and it was like nothing could even be thought of until that debt was paid. It was, it was never, um, this is an important part of our city and we should be supporting it in the same way that we support other things. So I think what this, what Steve is suggesting is if by putting the money in there, we are saying we do have a commitment to supporting the parks.
I agree. Let's make a motion.
Well, what did I write?
And a hundred thousand dollars you just came up with out of nowhere.
I just, yeah, it doesn't, I don't care what the money is, what the dollar amount is, as long as it's enough to cover the negative balance and to have some pocket of money there for them to look at and say, yes, we're serious, we can start planning parks, we can start planning improvements or maintenance and...
I guarantee you we spent whatever we put in there.
We're the ones that are going to have to keep some reins.
Should we be using living money for that or should that come from somewhere else?
It's the same thing if we sell, if we sell that parcel, it's going to go into the general fund.
Okay, you're saying that's the, that's going to happen then?
Well, I said if we do.
She says that we don't know that yet.
Well, we don't.
I said if we do, that's what it would happen, and based on the conversation we had.
And I, I think the other thing in there is, you know, I don't think the parks, this allows, in my mind, the Parks and Recreation Committee to plan.
Yes.
It's not like they have, you know, a shopping list of projects, they're going to go spend a hundred thousand dollars in the next couple of months, it just gives them a framework for planning.
Yes.
We can't spend it without your approval anyways. We just motion and then you guys have to vote on it.
But Jim is sure, and you laughed when you said that, that wasn't a good thing for you to start discussing.
I sit next to him during parks meetings, I know what you're going to say.
But that's exactly what Terry told us, we're, we're stuck, we're, we're stuck, we can't move because we see this negative balance as an impediment to being able to do anything.
Make a motion.
So I would make a motion to transfer a hundred thousand dollars of the excess reserve funds from last year into the Park and Rec Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to see, I, I think it's going to go through the way we're talking here, but I'd like to see less than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, me too, give me a number.
You would, you would offer a friendly amendment?
For planning and stuff?
It's already less than a hundred thousand because we're going to pay off the parking lot.
Pay us back our own money with our own money?
What's the, what's the fund?
Well, right now, there's, I think, twenty-six that is owed to the fund, so call it negative twenty-six.
Negative twenty-six. By doing this, we're not automatically just going to pay the twenty grand, I mean, whatever it is.
No.
I mean, we still have to decide that on, in the future.
Yes.
Yes.
You guys are terrible with this high finance, don't you, what?
I, I would say ten thousand dollars.
It's a negative twenty-six, I would say it needs to be over twenty-six.
They can plan with the ten, they're not paying the twenty-six back anyhow, you know, unless there's been some, you know, some stuff coming in that they have ten to plan and do stuff with, that, you know, that's...
I keep hearing...
Because I, I see, I see immediately a hundred thousand and, oh, here's twenty-six, you know, and all of a sudden we got seventy-two.
It's immaterial. Something that's going to automatically be spent with it.
Oh, I disagree.
If you put in ten now, you're on a negative sixty.
We have a, okay, we have a friendly amendment and what, you were going to offer it first.
I'd say twenty thousand.
You'd say twenty thousand, do you accept the friendly amendment?
No, I think it's got to be at least enough to cover the twenty-six.
So it's still, it stands at...
Then we're going to add to zero.
Make it a hundred thousand, like you suggested.
It stands at a hundred thousand, there was a second for that. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, so three in favor and two opposed, it passes, so there is that money for...
I'll pass your concerns.
Now get to work.
Good luck in getting them through here, huh?
Last item.
All right, next and final item is the EDA request to initiate ordinance review regarding lot size uses in the VMUB zoning district.
This kind of came up, uh, in, I had a couple calls about after Chico's closed, about whether, uh, from realtors and developers about whether the restaurant could be purchased separately. Uh, and, you know, we brought, I brought it up at the EDA meeting and, uh, you know, one of the things in here is you could kind of minimize that, but right now in this zoning district, there is a minimum lot size of two and a half acres. Uh, the feeling was that for, you know, if somebody wanted to run that restaurant and own the building, I mean, currently, you're, you know, you'd be presumably leasing the building, uh, and if you wanted to make major improvements, it's tough to finance, you know, based upon leasing a building, you know, on a shorter-term basis, and, you know, allowing somebody to own a building, own a building, I think the feeling was from the EDA that, uh, you know, it gives somebody an incentive to both make interior and exterior improvements as needed. I think I, you know, summarized that. So the question was, you know, the, uh, really requesting that the Planning Commission look at all, look at what alternatives may be available. I think condom, Sherry noted condominiumizing is already available, but I think one of the things in this zoning district, a commercial PUD is not available.
Correct.
And that may be one thing to look at. It's just, you know, when you look at how do you initiate a zoning change, it's either by Planning Commission or by the council initiating an ordinance review, and the EDA's request was that council initiate an ordinance review.
Why do you have the options here as initiator request of the Planning Commission to consider options for separate ownership or take no action? That's the ordinance review, that number one?
Yes.
That's it.
Right.
Are there other properties like this one?
Not with two buildings on one location that I'm aware of that could be commercially separated.
So this, a whole blue area is the two and a half acres?
Correct.
And what, there's the, the shops or the, the ball buildings?
In front.
Well, no, in the back. Where the clinic is, and then there's Chico's, and is there anything else in there?
No.
And the buildings in the front?
Separate lot.
And they don't use that at all? They don't use that blue area at all? They don't park here or anything else?
No, separate lot.
Okay. No, I know, but do they use it?
Where's the...
There's grass and...
Is the septic, is the septic on that lot?
Septic's up by the driveway coming in.
And it's just for those two buildings?
Yeah.
So if, um, well, I recommend that one. That's kind of a no-brainer, I think.
The EDA said, hey, planning commission, take a look at options.
Yeah, the EDA can't initiate it, it would have to come through council.
Right. Doesn't mean we have to agree with, I mean, approve it, but definitely we should look at it, so. I, somebody want to make a motion?
I would move to initiate a request to the Funding Commission to consider options for separate ownership of buildings on a common parcel.
Second.
Any further discussion?
There's a question about parking, I mean, if you get separate buildings and that type of thing, obviously the restaurant is going to need some extra parking from, you know, what their lot has right now, certainly, so, I don't know, something that could be resolved.